Township of Precipity, Troy Hills Township Council Special Meeting, April 29th, 2025. This meeting was called to order by Council President Karifi at 5:33 PM. The agenda of this special meeting, to the extent known, is as follows: Review and Discussion of the Mayor's 2025 Budget Recommendations. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at Municipal Building on April 16, 2025, where it's remained posted since that date. Copy of this notice appeared in the Daily Record on April 21, 2025. Can I ask everybody to please stand for the flag salute?
Slight allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as we call it.
Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Ms. McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Musella.
Here.
Ms. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Barberio, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Colette Madden, Township Clerk, and Angelica Sabatini, the CFO. Council President, we have a quorum. Can we begin?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're going to go right into the budget summary. Initially, I'll turn that over to Administration and Finance.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and Council. We're not going to take too much time from our standpoint. We're going to let the departments do most of the talking here. What you see is an overall increase on this budget of tax rate is 2.13. The municipal portion increase is 2.22. It's a $4.95 per month effect to the average residential home for $59.41. This budget protects the services our residents depend on and continues investing in Precipity's future. With all of the issues that you see out there that every resident and every other municipality deals with, whether it's something as simple as the insane increase on eggs and how that affects everything else, you know, the supply chain has gone crazy and there's a lot of issues that we've been dealing with, this is a really good budget. First up, we're going to hear from the Police Department, Chief Antina, Deputy Chief Dowd, and Captain Carney. They can go into the detail of their budget.
I'd like to thank the Council for having us here tonight to talk about the budget that was prepared. I'd like to thank Jamie Cryon for his assistance with the budget. We've been doing this a long time, the three of us, the four of us actually, preparing budgets, and they're never easy. Our opinion is a little different than other people sometimes. And the mayor, you know, to thank the mayor too, I've been around, we've been around a long time, the four of us combined, and we really do get a lot of support from the Council, but most importantly, the mayor, he's always willing to listen to our issues and give us opinions on what he thinks and to listen us out when we have issues that we need to address. So I'd like to thank him on that. I think I've been, like I said, we've been doing this a long time, and I don't think we've ever read our mission statement into record. So just give me a second, I want to read that. "The mission of the Precipity Police Department is to provide an exemplary level of service and protection to the residents and all who may visit, work in, or travel through our community. We will serve the community with a commitment to cultivating the public trust through professional conduct while aggressively enforcing criminal and traffic laws without prejudice or bias, with respect for the rights of all people to safely enjoy life and liberty." I thought that was important to read because a lot of our budget is, and the presentation that I put in front of your chairs there, is based on community and also production from our officers. I won't go through all of the community aspects that we do during the year, but there's a list of them in here. Right now, we have two officers that are doing community on a full-time basis. Our goal is to have department-wide, have more people in that specialized unit, but to have our officers be more cognizant of the community, stop and talk to people, we want to be more open to the community. And I know I said this last year and I said it the year before, that's our goal every year, is to be a community-based department. With the production part of it, calls for service, just to go over it briefly, in the past year from '23 to '24, our calls for service went up 15,000 calls. Our summonses increased roughly 6,000, 7,000 for summonses, and arrests are up by about 100. Motor vehicle stops are up about 8,000. And on the opposite end, our residential burglaries have gone down from 51 to 29. So these are major improvements. I think a big part of it is that there's visibility. Our officers are out there. We've done some tweaking with our schedule. The last time we were here, I know Captain Wieners and Deputy Chief Dowd, we had changed the schedule last year when we had a presentation. It didn't quite work the way we wanted, so we changed it again, and we're getting better results from it, both on the production side and also for overtime. We realized, and I know if you look at the budget, overtime is high at points. From changing our schedule, the last comparison from last year, we're down 50% in overtime for patrolmen. Now supervisors, we anticipate we're going to make some promotions in the next week. When we do that, our overtime should come down with that. I'm almost guaranteeing that it's going to come down. And our dispatcher overtime right now is down 75% because we filled some spots that we needed to fill. So we're making strides to keep it efficient, our department. We're constantly seeking to improve and do different things. If we see something that doesn't work, we're going to change it. You know, if we get advice from somebody else, you know, that's what we do. You know, we'll change our plan. But I think right now, the way we're working it, we have a lot of young officers, they're very aggressive, and they're driving around, and that's what we want. We want visibility. That's a very good preventative measure for us. The one main thing that our budget entails is hiring. We're having a difficult time with retention, like all other police departments. We're just coming up on a cycle where we're getting a lot of people retiring. We have probably 11 that could, are eligible to retire this year going on. We just lost about three or four in the past three months. And we definitely have three leaving, one of them being my deputy chief, who's leaving me hanging in June. But that's going to be a big loss to the department. So that's part of our budget, is hiring more people so that we can move people to the spots that we need to build up our detective bureau, build up our traffic unit, you know, and do things that are so-called luxuries. But, so I don't know if you have any questions. I know we're on a short time period. We're going in the right direction. Our officers are very motivated. Like I said, they're very aggressive. We're trying to change the culture of the police department. We're trying to make this, you know, I'm proud of them and I want them to be proud of the police department because this is a fantastic township to work for. We don't have a high crime rate. The community supports us. You really can't ask for more. So we're trying to build up their confidence, both giving confidence to them and them feeling the confidence back. So I don't know if anybody has any.
No. First, I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Chief, because when we came back in here in '22, as you know, the police department was decimated. Down to 81 deployable police officers. I knew the mission was, at that time, to bring it back to the standards that we're used to here in Precipity. As you know, at that time, we really didn't have much of a traffic division. The detective bureau was struggling. As you know, pre, post-COVID, you know, there was a lot of, you know, burglaries going on, catalytic converters being stolen. We knew what we had to do, and we beat that part of it up, and it has paid off. I can tell you right now that the residents in Precipity are very happy with your department. They're very happy what's going on. They're very happy that you're involved, that the police is more community outreach as well as I am. So it doesn't happen just by me coming as mayor. It comes in the fact that you guys are committed, and I appreciate that. And I think this, your budget, you know, is a very good budget. Not only did it take care of the past, it takes care of the future as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, and I could speak for the four of us here, and we try to instill that into the manpower that we have working for us. We enjoy dealing with the community. You know, we don't get upset when they call, or, you know, we love going to the different coffees with the cop or going to the PAL, and that really is a big part of what we do. So we're going to continue that. And that's not a hard thing to do.
Hey, Chief, just a couple of quick questions. The 95 that's referenced here, does that include the three or four that already left, or was that with them included at the time that this was created? Do you know?
No, that's the actual people that are here now. So we're losing a few before the end of the year.
Off the top of that as well.
Yeah.
And then in the budget, I think we had five. Is that correct, BA Cryon? Five additional officers on top, so we're going to get to 100?
It's, yes, five. Okay.
We do have, I think, two more police officers that will be retiring by the end of the year.
Yeah, but three.
Three, okay.
A total of three.
Before the end of the year.
We're going to get to 106.
Yeah.
We would be at 106 on the books.
With the amount that we're going to get. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any concerns about attracting or retaining talent? Are people leaving because they're like, hey, man, it's time to retire, I'm done? Or is it retaining talent as well?
Well, that's a good question.
All guys retiring, right?
They're just eligible for retirement. You know, the days where guys stay a real, like, I've been around a long time, that's very unusual to be, you know, as long as I know Tom Carney's been around. We've all been around a while, but to stay past that 30 point is a little unusual in this time. You know, guys put their time in, especially the younger group. They're starting very young, and they get out young. And a lot of the guys that we have leaving have military time, so they buy that time back, and then they go on to do something else. We just had an officer leave with 20 years, and, you know, he wanted to spend time with his family.
Makes sense.
He took the cut, you know, and he, you know, I try to, anybody that comes to me and says they're leaving, I try to persuade them to stay because I do care for the people that work for us. But everybody has their own issues, you know, and why they're leaving, what they want to do, you know, so.
Is there any opportunity to partner either with the schools or with the community college? I know they have a two-year degree program for criminal justice that we can create a feeder system of Morris County, obviously I love Precipity kids, but Morris County kids that can become a feeder into that, because again, you're growing by 10% almost. Do we have that set up?
So we do deal with the schools. Remo, you know, is in contact with the schools. I don't know if it's so much a feeder, but the way we run the program now, the way we run the hiring process now, is really a good opportunity for people to apply because we're dealing with the county, we're just staying strictly in the county, and they're not going through the traditional process of civil service. So I have, you know, I know you guys are aware of it, we signed some ordinances, or whatever you want to call them, about nepotism and all of that stuff with the hiring. So there are opportunities now to go through. If you're not a good test taker, or you have other qualities, you can apply, which we have people applying now, through the app, through the police app. And it's a lot easier than going through the whole process with civil service, where you're dealing maybe with thousands of people. Now you're dealing with maybe tens of people or 100.
Perfect. Last question. So obviously, you've gone through this budget. I'm sure you asked for a lot of other stuff, and they said no way. What else, if we had unlimited funds, what else would you have projected for this year or for next year that you think you need to be, we need to be as council, aware of what you're asking, or any?
Manpower.
Manpower, number one.
That's what it comes down to.
What do you want to get to in manpower?
Okay. So just looking at the way the township has grown, we're at roughly 60,000 people now in township. In the daytime, it probably swells up. I think we are going to get to, as a department, and as you guys, as the council and the mayor, where that ordinance that states that our max is 113 is going to have to go away.
Okay.
So, I mean, right now, 110 is a good number to start with, but coming in the next couple of years with all the growth, I would have to say that that number's not going to be a realistic number. So we don't ask for a lot of toys.
Yeah.
We ask for cars just to keep us going. And all the, you'll see in the budget when you look through it, most of the stuff is needed, you know, updates on programs, computers, stuff like that. We don't really ask for a whole lot of extra stuff, other than manpower.
What about, from your perspective, you have the police station, is there a need for like a substation if we were to build, say, too many houses in one area? Should we be considering a substation in that area or built into one of these developments, things like that?
Well, substations are good, but you have to name them. You know, they've talked, they talked about that years ago, having a substation up in Powder Mill. I don't quite see the need for it right now.
Okay.
Because there's not a whole lot of walking traffic, and that's what basically a substation would be.
Yep.
Our guys are on the road, so they can get, if they're assigned to that area, they're going to get to where they need to get to. You know, you know, a substation's good for community, you know, community issues, when people want to walk in. You don't really get that kind of foot traffic, traffic up there. The other spot, maybe, you know, North Everett Road, if, once we get that built up the way, you know, like the township wants, that might not be a bad idea, but, yeah.
Thanks.
We actually, in '17, we almost had a substation up in Powder Mill.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm thinking, you know, as we look at affordable and the options for affordable, right, and I know obviously we've tossed around a bunch of different theories on how to deal with it. You know, one of the things I've sort of commented on is it doesn't make sense to put a police substation if we're going to have, you know, sort of a community where we want to make sure everyone stays safe and happy. And we're building a lot of developments in certain areas. I didn't know if it made sense to consider it. So appreciate your feedback down.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief, for being here. First, I want to deliver some feedback. You know, it's been a year since we've done this, and I think in the, and then I'll ask you some questions. I think in the year that's gone by, definitely agree with your statement. I think that the police is much more visible. I hear that from residents, and they see police utilizing the spaghetti pattern, you know, going into their neighborhoods, you know, all times of the day, which I think is really important as a way for deterrence. You know, certainly with a growing workforce, a growing manpower, that'll enable you to do more. And I do agree with you, with, you know, the increase in our population, we're going to have to look at continuing to hire, so we can also bring overtime down, because it's still a very high number. Would you agree?
Yeah, I would say overtime was high. Like I said, this year, it's substantially lower. If you look at from '25 to the '24, the same time period from January to April, this year, last year, we were at 14,000, this year, we're at, so that's a substantial drop.
Yeah.
And if you drag that out over the year, it'll be a big difference. Overtime for dispatchers is down from 14,000 of last year to 2,000.
Yeah.
2,800. So that's a big difference. Now supervisors are a little high right now. It's only 3,000 on here, but when we make those promotions and we fill those spots, that should bring that down substantially.
And, you know, some of, I guess, some of the improvements, and I deliver these to the BA, you know, throughout the year. You know, I think from a cultural perspective, I do hear from residents from time to time that they tend to notice, police officers are on their phones on road drops, looking down, you know, not really engaged with the public as they come by, or that the windows might be up. So that could be some, you know, specific feedback just to deliver to people to ensure that, you know, they're friendly, that, you know, they're trying to engage residents as they come by. And then, when it comes to the coffee with the cop events, I find hardly if ever I am able to, or, you know, people that work are able to make those events because they're held at during working hours. Is there any way that we can start doing these events in the evening, or would that be, you know, a higher cost due to your schedule?
No, I mean, we could do stuff like that in the evenings. It has to be planned ahead of time.
Yeah.
You know, we'd have to change schedules, and the problem with doing that in the evening hours is things aren't open that late. And, you know, it's easier for the, like, the banks and the different places that we go to to be open in the daytime. They're not as busy, or they're open. So, but yeah, we could always look into something like that. And again, that would add to, when we start to add more people into these different divisions and sections, you know.
And I'm trying to understand, I think that for the public's education, I think earlier, this, in March, the mayor's office released figures for motor vehicle stops and summonses issued, which was 3,937. It's on, it's on your sheet. 3,937 stops in 2022, 7,244 stops in 2023, and then 18,600 stops in 2024. So I'm just trying to understand the staggering increase, how there was such a large increase in 11,356 stops in a single year.
It's good, right?
Well, I mean, it sounds good, but, you know, help me understand how it increased so much.
Would you like to talk on that?
Manpower is one.
It's manpower.
It is manpower. It is manpower. And the reason why I'm asking the deputy chief to talk on that is because he was, he's a big proponent of the way we're.
Those numbers are real. There's nothing phony about those numbers. They're not in case. I just say those are legitimate.
Those are legitimate numbers. For many years, leading up to COVID and throughout COVID, the chief spoke to culture before. The culture started to lag in terms of the culture of doing police work. Officers and through no fault of their own, started to feel as though they didn't want to engage the public, for obvious reasons, because we came through some tough years, and to be honest, it felt like police officers should stay out of the way because they were finding themselves in a lot of trouble, and false allegations, and so they cowered a little bit. But we changed that culture, and we taught them, if you know what you're doing, and you stick to your values as a police officer, and you stick to them in terms of knowing your job, having technical knowledge, and the confidence, you'll be fine. It's okay to stop a car, and it's okay to tell the people what the violation is for, and it's okay to write the ticket. If you're doing the job the right way, there'll be no blowback. And over time, we taught them that. We held them accountable. We started making them document their own, everything went computerized. So for many years, it was very easy to do a shift and not realize what you did throughout the night. We determined that it was a good idea that they documented everything they did on paperwork, like the old days. So at the end of a shift, they can look and say, wow, maybe I didn't do so much. They can see their numbers. By doing that, last year, they started producing a lot more motor vehicle stops, a lot more arrests, a lot more residential 10-6s, the spaghetti that you speak of, and a lot more summonses. They became aware of what they're doing or not doing on a nightly basis. Couple that with the confidence of doing the job, the numbers shot up tremendously. Also, to add to that, was increasing the traffic unit as well. So what we have is a traffic division of six police officers now, and an entire patrol division that's acting like traffic officers also, not just being reactive and going through the calls that they're being sent to. They're partaking in stopping cars and writing tickets. So that's why you're seeing a huge, huge number. Remember, we've got a lot of police officers. If each of them do, you know, just five stops extra a shift, you're going to see numbers inflate like that. So when we say we're changing the culture, we are, we did. It's only getting better. We are very, 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 I can't say enough how proud we are of the police officers in Precipity. And I say that from the bottom of my heart, and I'm very happy. You know, I'm approaching, I've only got about seven and a half weeks left, and nothing makes me happier to see a police department that I loved to work for my entire career. This is where I always wanted to be. I got the job. It was a dream come true. The towns treated me well. Mayor, you're very, very good to the police department and to me personally. And I want to say thank you, Mayor, for that. I really appreciate it. And credit a lot of what we've done in the police department to your support. So we're very proud, and I can get emotional about it. I'm very happy and proud of the officers that we, that we're producing here in Precipity.
But if, and that's good to hear. But if somebody were to say to you that the reason these numbers went up substantially is because you're now including instances where officers are simply dispatched to disabled vehicles or other non-enforcement situations, what would you say to that person?
They're wrong.
Okay.
Just to.
A motor vehicle stop, submit a motor vehicle stop.
Just to add a note to what you guys said, too, is, you know, we've hired a lot of officers in the last two, three years. And I know firsthand, I've taught all of them at the academy, and I can tell you that Precipity, you guys have hired some high-quality, very proactive.
Fantastic.
Proactive young men. And so I know that's got to be adding to your numbers as well. So you guys have done a really good job at hiring.
Yeah. There's, like the deputy chief said, I'm glad we got the opportunity to speak because he is passionate about the police department, and that's what we want from our officers. We try to portray that to them, right? When we're talking to them, you know, there's, Council President can tell you, there's always storytelling. Our stories are positive. It's about good experiences that we've had in the police department. And when they listen, they're sucking all of that in. They're grabbing it, and that's what we want. And that lends to being productive, because they're not ashamed of working. They want to work, and that's what we want from them. Like the deputy chief said, Brian said, it's a fantastic police department. Quality, quality officers. Listen, do we make mistakes sometimes? Sure. But we correct them. We fix them. And if it's a policy issue, we change it. So, yeah, there's no, there's no flubbing in numbers.
Okay. And I guess for the summonses data, it was 2,005 in 2022, 3,397 in 2023, and then it jumps to 10,949 in 2024. There was an increase in 7,552 summonses.
Okay, I have the summons one in front of me, so I have 22, 2,300, 23, 4,200, and then 13,000 in '24.
Yeah, it's almost like an 8,000 summonses increase in a single year. But does this data now include warnings and things that you weren't including before?
Well, no, warnings are separate.
Okay.
So the warnings are 1,000, 2,200, and 7,400.
Okay.
So those are separate. So total, there's 20,000 police actions taken on those motor vehicle stops.
And my final question, as we look ahead, what are you doing to impose controls that will continue to move overtime down?
Well, our schedule is a big, a big factor. So the changing of the schedule, which I don't remember when we actually made the change, but.
October.
So in October. So in October, we'll have a full year to see. We had a full year with the old one. It didn't quite work the way we wanted, so we moved some hours around with the increase of officers that we're bringing in. You know, listen, we're constantly, like I said at the beginning, we're constantly looking for different ways to save money and to give the best product to the community. Right now, we're doing really well with that. I'm happy to say we're going to make some promotions on next Friday, which is great, and that will hopefully solve the problem with the supervisors. And, you know, we looked at the supervisor situation. We looked to see maybe we didn't need as many, or maybe we needed more. So we came up with a good number that we think is going to work, and we're going to go from there. But, yeah, we're constantly, almost on a daily basis, we're looking where to save money and where to have the best product.
Chief, also, if you could touch on mandatory training. I know overtime, I know some of that overtime is put towards that state-mandated training.
Yes.
So a lot of these officers cannot attend mandatory state training on their shift, so they have to go when they're off-shift, and that's, there's nothing you can do about that.
Right.
State-mandated, they have to be there. And the state keeps adding more and more mandatory training. So I know that has to be a part of the overtime.
Yeah. So, so I know somebody mentioned a while ago about active shooter, which we do active shooter training. We're actually doing another one coming up in May. And that was part of the reason why at points, people were saying, well, we have this group that we can go to and we have this group to go to. We're willing to take as much training as we can, but training costs money. When, especially when you're doing the department wide. So we have 95 officers that have to be slotted into different trainings at different times, you know, because they can't do it while they're working. So we have them on off time. So there is a cost to training. Training is fantastic. We try to do a lot in-house and we space it out to where we could have them stagger. But with the mandatory training, you know, domestic violence training, active shooter training, like all of that training is mandated by the state and county. So we have to fit it in and there's a cost to it, you know? And that does add to the overtime, like you're, like you were saying.
Councilor President, just real quickly, I think one of the things that has been great, you know, manpower has definitely helped those numbers increase and there's no doubt about it. Also, when I introduced the panel, I was, I'm sorry, I did not introduce Captain Wieners. I didn't see you back there, sorry. But the other part of it is this leadership team. They really take great pride in their work, all four of them. And they do an incredible job at making sure that the next level is doing what they're supposed to do and in that level of, uh, make sure that the, the lower level, uh, make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So there's, they take great pride in their jobs and we talk about these numbers a lot with mayor and this upper management team here. And there's definitely a sense of pride for, for their commitment to this town and it's refreshing to see.
And do you know, Brian, BA Brian, do you know, um, there's like a $660,000 communications and other maintenance under, in the police budget? Do you know what that's about, that new expense?
Yes. I'm glad I introduced Captain Wieners for that one. That's, that has to do with our Motorola. Would you like to talk about that? Yes.
Ten Shaun's.
Yes. So the, you know, we have a very robust communication system. It's state of the art, interoperable with both county, state and federal levels of government and emergency response agencies. And also what's new about this system as compared to our previous system is it encompasses every township entity, not just a police department, but fire, rescue, EMS, OEM, DPW, water, parks, sewer, trying to think of forgetting anybody. We have a lot more people on the system now and the core requires system maintenance. First three years of the system, we were on a warranty, so we weren't getting charged that. Now the warranty is up, we have to pay a maintenance fee.
Will this have any impact on response time or communications?
Yeah. If they don't pick the emergency response, they don't respond and there's no response time at that point. So it also, you know, fixed some holes that we had in our coverage within the township. The previous radio system, there was areas of the township that a patrol officer could be driving through and not realize that they were out of radio coverage. So they could miss the call for somebody having a heart attack literally around the block. We fixed those gaps. Our system is also designed for in-building portable radio coverage. And what that means is the portable radios are the ones that we carry on our belts as opposed to the one that's in the vehicle. So we have a nine, honestly, it's like 99.8% in-building coverage in, within the township from our portable radio. So we go into some of these larger building complexes, we're not losing radio coverage. So if they have to call for backup or additional assistance, that call is, is being answered.
Any other, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys. The presentation was very good.
Thank you. Good talk to you. Good luck, guys. Thank you.
Captain Wieners is here. Are you doing OEM or is that?
No.
No, that's not on the, that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is our Public Works Parks Engineering Department.
Councilor President, we have a, a, a good and interesting situation here. Jimmy Walsh retired after about 30 years on the job and he did a great job for the township. Luckily, we had some great people already here to be able to pick up the slack where he's, you know, from him leaving. So we have Justin Lizza, who is our township engineer. He's also our acting DPW director and acting superintendent, uh, working in Jimmy's place. Marge Wolk, who is our assistant DPW director and now supervisor of sanitation or superintendent of sanitation. Kenny Merle is our superintendent of roads and Billy Sanford, who is our superintendent of parks and forestry. All three of the individuals below Justin have at least 20 years' experience in town, have been in the positions, they know exactly every one of the players, every one of the issues that come up. So it's a seamless transition to make sure that the township is covered. Now, we, we talk about the services that are offered and Marge and I were talking today about a survey that one of the other administrators in the county asked for among, you know, county municipalities. We are far and above offering much more comprehensive, comprehensive and extensive services to our residents in the sanitation and DPW arena. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin Lizza.
Thank you, BA Brian.
Thanks.
Mayor, council members, it's an honor to be here tonight. And as BA Brian said, it's a unique, a, a unique situation that I've recently been put in. It's, you know, a great honor to work with individuals like Kenny Merle and Marge Wolk and, and Billy Sanford. You know, we've worked very closely together over the years in my tenure here. And now just to really be working side by side with them and, and more of a managerial level is an honor and we're, we're really looking forward to it. You know, the engineering division, streets and roads, parks and forestry and sanitation have a lot of individuals that take great pride in what they do. And, and I believe it shows in the leadership that's here now, it's going to just carry that forward and it's going to be an exciting year and years to come to see how it progresses. So I'm going to start with the engineering budget. I'll go through that and then I'll pass it off to Marge to talk about sanitation and, and then Ken and Billy will take care of their divisions as well. So I'll, I'll go into the engineering with the operating budget. It's, you know, my, my operating budget is pretty small. It's, you know, mostly just your normal operating stuff. What you will see in that though, there is just one significant change. And really that's under building maintenance. You know, as many of you know, we're not in town hall, we're in a, actually an old house right up the road and we've moved in in 1990. And to answer, really hasn't been much improvement that's been done over the years. Recently, we've, we've put some money into the basement. We have files and offices down there and we have water leaks and we have put French drains in and whatnot. So finally got that corrected. And now really these improvements, what we're asking for is really just for the first floor. You know, the carpeting's ripped and stained. We have wallpaper literally peeling off the wall. The horizontal blinds are broken. So it's really more cosmetic stuff, just to kind of give it a little freshen up some paint and whatnot. So that's really what we're asking for, for that increase with the building maintenance. It's not something that's over the top. The only structural stuff we'll be doing is for our conference room. You know, if you could picture, if anyone's been there, you walk in the front door, to the left is the old living room. And it's just a wide open space. And, you know, what we've been finding over the years is there's just not a place to have a private meeting. So, you know, we'll have building maintenance come in and put a door in and just be able to, you know, close the door and have a private meeting in there without other residents coming in and, you know, looking to get a permit and overhearing conversation. So nothing of any significance, just some cosmetics and functionality changes that we're looking to make there. I mean, if anyone has questions or comments with the O and E, I can answer now and if not, I'll move on to, really what the bulk of my budget is, is capital. And, you know, every year we request, you know, six, seven million dollars for capital improvements and, you know, you know, most of what we do, a lot of it is road work. We do about $2 to $3 million of road paving every year and that's just your resurfacing. That's just the milling and resurfacing. But then we also have the, the larger projects where we're going in like the areas up in, in Pudding Stone Heights now, where we're putting in curb, we're putting in drainage, widening some roads to make them a little bit more easily accessible for vehicles and emergency services. And with that, we've been working very closely with water and sewer departments when we do projects like this. So the Pudding Stone Heights project, we're in the second phase now and a big component of that is to put in sanitary sewers. All the houses up there are right now on septic. We're trying to get them to get off the septic so there, there will be a means for them to now connect into the, a public sanitary sewer system. So whenever we embark on a project like, like these, we, we always try to incorporate improvements from the other departments. Even as far as North Beverick Road, we have two phases of the Streetscape project, which is in construction now. Another big component of that is water main replacement. The, the water department has had numerous breaks in the Lake Hiawatha area over the years and the ones on North Beverick Road, which is a larger transmission line, has been problematic. So part of the Streetscape projects was also incorporate water main installation so that we have a new main put in, we can abandon the old main and, you know, we'll have, you know, 40, 50, 60 years of, you know, trouble free service going forward. So, you know, we, we are very aware of what we're doing as far as the inconvenience. So we try to limit that by incorporating as much as we can into projects. And, yeah, may delay the construction a little bit, but it's better than ripping a road up and, you know, having residents and businesses being disrupted for another three, four, five months at, you know, a later date, a year or two or three down the road. You know, that's what we have and it, the bulk of the capital, like I said, is for road improvements, but we do have a couple other types of projects on Sylvan Way. There's a large culvert that goes underneath Sylvan Way in the area of where Wyndham and Tiffany is. And what we're, we've found is during our inspections, the, a part of the culvert, the center structure is deteriorated. So, you know, we do culvert projects like that where we have to replace them. Over in Hills of Troy, right now, we have a corrugated metal culvert that's been in place for probably 60, 70 years where the bottom is completely rotted out. You know, the Public Works guys have done a great job just trying to patch it, but there's no way to really do much more than a patch and a Band-Aid right now. Part of what we're looking for is a, a capital improvement to replace that culvert, which, you know, it, it's going to be, you know, about $1.7 million. It's not cheap. It's an extremely large culvert, takes a lot of drainage that comes off of Route 80 and passes through the Hills of Troy, through that concrete channel and into the Troy Brook. So, you know, we, we have a variety of different projects we're requesting funding for. And, and one of the things you, you'll see in there in, in some of the descriptions, there's always a drainage component to it. The stormwater management requirements that the state puts on municipalities now has been ratcheted up year after year. This year, we've had, or coming into 2025, there were a lot of requirements for mapping infrastructure and street sweeping and inspecting and maintaining catch basins. Well, now it's going a step further where we're looking at outfalls, we're looking at full mapping of systems. They're, the inspection of detention bases, which is going to be a, a huge issue for, and not just engineering, because we're, we're going to be the gatekeepers of all the detention bases, but for businesses where they need to maintain their basins, inspect them and report to us every year. There's over 277 of them in town. So just trying to manage that is going to be an issue. And, you know, it's something we're looking forward to, but, you know, it, the state keeps giving these mandates to us and we just have to make sure that we have the resources in place to be able to do that. And, and that, that's really what's being represented here.
Thank you. Thank you for, you do, you have a lot of work ahead of you. So with those ratcheted up things that you have to do for the stormwater, eventually though, hopefully, it'll maybe make life a little easier, you think?
Yeah, you know, it's like anything else, you know, it's the initial setup, it's the initial sending out notices to the property owners and getting a program in place. And once it does get going, and it's going to take a couple of years, but once it does go, I think it'll move a lot better. But it's just that initial, you know, and, you know, embarking on these initiatives to try to get a program in place.
What do, what do individual homeowners have to do that need that kind of, do they do their own or do you have to come out for that too?
Well, a lot of these stormwater requirements really don't affect individual homeowners.
Yeah. Well, I mean, sometimes they have to mitigate the stormwater on their property, but that's not your responsibility.
No, that is ours. So anytime that they are actually increasing impervious coverage by more than 500 square feet, they have to do some type of mitigation. And what they do goes through my, my office. So we have ways to, you know, suggest what they could do. We review their plans and then we, you know, follow up through construction.
Now, DEP does have some grants and stuff still, I hope. Are you able to use some of them or apply for some of those for these kinds of things?
Any, any grants that we can apply for, we are trying to get, to do and we, we are working right now and we have, we have about $15,000 of a $25,000 grant that municipalities were eligible for, which we're working off to help with these initial programs. And then once you get to certain milestones, you'll be able to apply for the additional $10,000. So there are grants and we do look to do that, not just with stormwater, but even with, you know, some of the road improvements. And we've been very successful with some of our, our grants.
So do you have to go out or does our, or does Millennium help with that?
With the grants?
Yeah.
Millennium helps definitely, but really.
Mostly, yeah.
Doing a lot of the work.
Every year, we, we apply for a DOT grant every single year. I know you, you get a specific road or a specific area and we apply and then you, you, most of the times we get approved.
We do, yeah. We, we apply for municipal aid grants every year for road improvements. We can get anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000, depending on the year. We've even been thinking outside the box. Matter of fact, you know, we'll be starting the Jeffon Surin Road project probably in about a month. And that was actually a DOT funded grant, but it was, it was actually for local freight. So really for roadways that have a lot of truck traffic, high truck volumes. And fortunately with UPS there, we met the criteria. So I applied a couple of years ago, we didn't get the grant. Two years ago, I applied again and we received $760,000. So, you know, we, we try to apply for grants, even if it's a little bit of a stretch because you never know. So we look at, you know, all these opportunities.
Yeah, I know you do some of that. That's why I was asking about Millennium because it's a lot of work to get over the grants too. So thank you.
Justin, with the massive amount of building that's going on in Parsippany right now, you know, where would you say, you know, the state of Parsippany's infrastructure is and where do we stand in being ready for all of the new residents, the new cars on the road? Can you comment on, you know, how we're the road? Um, can you comment on, you know, how we're getting prepared for it or if we are prepared for it?
Well, you know, um, hey, everyone knows it's going to be a, uh, a draw on all the infrastructure, not just, you know, the, you know, water and sewer, but, you know, the roadways and, uh, excuse me, schools and whatnot. So, um, yeah, it, the, the more people you bring in, it, it's going to be a drain. Um, I can't really speak for some of the other utilities, but from a roadway standpoint, we're trying to do what we can to make sure that the roads are in the best condition they're in. Um, you know, it's, we're, it's not just us, it's every town that's dealing with this. We're really stuck because we're trying to put developments in areas that are already developed. And trying to widen roadways, um, i- is virtually impossible to, to increase traffic volume. Um, you know, any road you go on now in, in town, and it's been like that for years, you know, we're at capacity. And, you know, the only thing we really could do is try to put infrastructure in place that is, uh, in good shape so that cars aren't being slowed down and that, you know, traffic signals are coordinated and, um, we can move vehicles efficiently. Um, but as far as trying to make drastic improvements, we're really bound by, you know, um, the right of ways that, that exist now. We're bound really taking large areas of property and, and, um, easements and whatnot. And, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck, but it's, it's not a unique thing to Parsipony. Every town in the state that, that's dealing with this, you know, is faced with those problems. But, you know, we, we're aware of it, we're trying to do what we can to, um, you know, minimize the impact as best as we can.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one thing I'd like to add. Um, it's, it's mandated building, not massive building. It's going to be massive, but it's mandated by the state, the Mount Laurel Doctrine. If anybody wants to go online and read about it, that's really what it is. But usually when these applications come in, Justin, you're, you're getting notified when applications come in. They coordinate, uh, these, uh, the builders have to coordinate with our engineer department to make sure they meet our requirements as well. Also, um, we talk about the roads here in Parsipony, talking about six-year plan. You can't, if you want your budget to go way out of whack, you try to fix every street in this town, your capital budget would be thirty million dollars. So that's why we have a six-year plan. I just want everybody to know that and understand, because there are some complaints out there about some of the streets and the roads. And I've been on some of them and they're pretty bad. But I've been on the ones that are on our list and they're even worse. So I know you do a great job trying to determine what roads need to be done over that six-year plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, um, I guess we're going on to Public Works next. You don't need to hold it, you can just speak.
Uh, Dan, I'm going to find help members. Thank you for having me here tonight. Uh, the past three years, we're very closely with Jim Walsh, our goal. Um, Justin was right.
Just have to, uh...
We have a really, uh, the best, I think, sanitationary something crew that I've had in years.
Hey, Marge, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you try to speak more? Is it on?
No.
Why not? No.
I don't know. I don't think it's on.
What Justin do? I think Justin messed it up.
There you go. It's on.
Okay, now good?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. Um, they're a great crew. They take pride in their work. They go over and above. Every time I ask them for something, it's done. Um, it's the first time we haven't had a lot of people either going to other departments or just resigning. So we've had a pretty good, like, full crew, which enables us to get a lot of training done on different equipment, such as the front loaders, the roll-offs, the crane truck, which we weren't be able, you know, able to do, uh, previously. We got two new, um, well, actually three, new front-end loaders, which, um, enable us to pick up some of the apartments, uh, Noel Gardens up in Powder Mill, and we will start Troy Hills Village in July this year.
Which was a lawsuit, sorry, that we lost and we had to, we take care of them now.
Yeah, so, um, everything's really going great with them and I'm proud of them. As far as the budget and everything, pretty much, uh, we went up in our building maintenance because we were told we need to get a new furnace. So I had to count for that. Everything else is pretty much the same. We went down in our, uh, we actually went up a little bit in postage for the increase in the calendars that go out and the increase in the postage cost. And we also, um, put some postage on the meter in the, at Town Hall. And then the only thing we went down was the sanitation contract line item, which we, uh, pay for getting rid of our recycling, our concrete, our tires, that type of stuff. But otherwise, everything is pretty good.
Any questions?
Any questions.
Okay, seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marge. And then now we're going on to Parks and Forestry.
Public Works.
All right.
Mayor Barbario, N B A, thank you for the appointment to, uh, Parks and Forestry Superintendent and Council. Thank you for, uh, having me tonight. Some of, uh, some of the things that I, I'd just like to bring up are as far as like, we're going to probably need to get some more people and fill some, a couple of positions. Some of the replacements are going to need to be skilled, skilled people that are hopefully already trained and we can put right out on the street to work. Uh, one of the, one of our biggest struggles right now is our, our tree section, which we really want to build up. Uh, we want to put a, a safety program and, and train people. So this way we could, we could get more people out on the road to, to take care of some of these things. Um, some of the things that we, we want to do throughout this next year and with this budget, that Jim really did submit this budget, so I didn't have a lot to do with it. But he did go over a lot of the things with me and he explained to me why things were cut, why things are put in, and certain improvements that like you really need to do and certain things, you know, you can wait until next year. So with, with that being said, um, we, we need to do some building improvements on our building. So we put in for the, uh, the capital budget, we put in about a hundred thousand dollars for our Parks and Forestry building. Uh, the building is thirty, thirty years old approximately, uh, with very minimal problems and, and we just basically Band-Aided the building as we've been going along. Uh, so he did put in some, some money for the repairs for our building. We're going to need some new garage doors. We're going to need, you know, new regular doors. We need to, to really beef that home base up. Uh, the roof repairs that you see in the capital budget are for our, our away buildings, parks and, and other things that, you know, we really need to get on top of so we don't have any, any problems later on in, in life. And our musco lighting systems in some of our fields are aging out. So we need to do some upgrades and some replacements. Uh, we could potentially have some pretty hefty electrical repair bills in some of our parks because of the age of some of our systems. So that was with our, our capital. Um, our parks building maintenance went up because we did put some Band-Aids on the building so we could keep things rolling. Uh, we did add, like, like I said, we did add money in the capital budget to try and not make this number go up in the O and E. But, uh, we do anticipate that we're going to need the thirty-five hundred dollars for, for building improvements and building maintenance. Uh, our computer expenses for computer hardware and software, we increased a little bit. Um, we do have a Windows ten upgrade situation that we got to do. Some of our computers have aged out and they needed, need to be upgraded in order to be compliant with I T Department and, and laws or whatever that may be. So we did add, increase that a little bit. Um, our, our dues journals and stuff like that, we added a little bit to it. That's for our licensing and certifications. And we're going to, we're going to certify some of our new hires as well as some of the people who are not certified in, uh, spraying and, uh, some other, the other stuff, fertilizing and stuff that we do in our department. Irrigation supplies and, and that went up quite a bit. And the reason that went up is because we do have an aging system. Uh, we weren't able to do some of the repairs during COVID. I hate to keep bringing COVID up as an excuse, but we were week on, week off with people. So we didn't really have enough qualified people to go out there and do the repairs that were necessary. And the price of some of the, some of the materials skyrocketed. So we kind of pushed some of it off. Hopefully we can get that money and get some of these fields back up and running and fixed. Um, one of them being Park Road Park, we need a new pump for that. And that's, that's a, a costly repair. That's not something that i- is easily done either. Uh, one of our expenses for fifty-five thousand dollars is for, they, they call it for gypsy moth, uh, control ash borer trees. As you all know, we had a, uh, an issue with the Emerald Ash Borer that killed pretty much all the ash trees in town. Uh, we are responsible for the right of ways and taking those trees down that are dead and eventually replacing them. Once again, that is, that number is for outside contractors to come in and help us, to free us up. A lot of times we use the contractors for jobs that we specifically cannot do, whether you need special equipment, cranes, or you have to rent equipment. Instead of doing that, we'll use the outside contractor to go ahead and do these jobs, which works out much better for us, because we can turn around and do our simple jobs or like more of our less tedious work to get that done and out of the way. Um, one thing that you will see that, that we don't use often, and I, I think it was just because it could potentially be because I miscategorized it, is there's a safety category on here that's asking for three thousand dollars. Well, I, I think what happened there is now that I know, we lowered our parks maintenance and rec green acres by about ten thousand dollars, but we asked for three thousand dollars in that, that, we want to leave that three thousand in the safety. So those products will be properly categorized. And you, you'll see tree stock is at fifteen thousand dollars. That's to replace trees that we take down. And that's, that's pretty much what our budget reads.
Thank you. Any questions from council or administration? Okay, seeing none?
I actually have a quick question. Did, you mentioned some of the building stuff. Is, is what you're reading from the requested or the actuals? Yeah, what you have there?
Uh, the actual reading on, on this sheet is a field replaced musco light system?
I think it was like three million dollars, something like that you mentioned?
No, nowhere near.
Okay.
It's, it's three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three hundred and fifty K.
That's a capital, uh...
It's a capital project.
It's a capital project.
So you, you, you'll get a list of those soon.
So they're not in here?
No.
No, sir. God, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Actually, I, I do have another question for you. So you have fifty thousand dollars in for tree removal, which that seems to be a hot button item. Should that number be higher?
It, it could very well be higher, you know. Uh, I, we could use a lot of money, because right now we're in a, in a very, in a low. Like I said, we want to try and get some more trained tree guys so we can say, here's your keys to the truck, you know what you're doing, you know, evaluate them and get them out on the road. But until we get that, you know, we, it, it could actually be higher, yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, and I'm just, I'm kind of thinking through what you're saying, right? So if we have to hire people, train them, get specialized vehicles as well?
In, in certain cases, we do have to replace vehicles.
Okay, for tree removal, I'm just talking about solely, okay.
Yes. Certain vehicles, it doesn't make sense for the township to purchase because they're not an everyday use.
Sure, understood. I- is there an opportunity to offer that as a shared service out to other municipalities in the county that are having the same problem?
I'm not really too familiar with that, so I don't, I don't want to answer that.
Okay, all good.
Thank you, guys. Guys, did a great job. Thank you. Next is, uh, building?
No, uh, roads.
Oh, okay.
Roads. Tried to get you out of it, man, but, you know, you can thank the B A for that.
I, uh, first off, I'd like to thank Mayor Barbario, N B A Crime and the Council for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, as far as our budget, um, I'd like to start with, uh, capital. Um, I like, we're going to be replacing some trucks. Um, we have a, uh, a few pickups and mason dumps. Um, we're looking to get a, a hook lift. It's a, it's a, it's got a big, um, box on the back, so we could do more potholes. It holds more material. Um, we're looking to get that. Um, we're looking to get a new loader to replace our old John Deere and, um, uh, another trailer to haul our cat excavator. Um, as far as operations, there's been a few changes. Um, for our automotive equipment, plows, the, the plows are purchased with the trucks. And, um, so it's down two thousand dollars because we're not purchasing the plows after the trucks, we're getting them together. Um, our, our drainage is up, um, because as Justin was, he mentioned earlier, we're trying to be more compliant as far as with stormwater operations. Um, so we're getting more face plates and we're changing the grates on our, on our storm drains. So, you know, the, the plastic bottles and cans can go down the drains. So we're looking to do, especially when we do improvements, um, on the roads, we have to put these on. So, and that, some of that comes out of Justin's budget too, out of his capital. But, um, you know, our stormwater, our stormwater, um, stuff, it's, it's really like, like Justin mentioned, it's getting, um, more and more for, there's more and more for us to do. So we're trying to go above and beyond because we realize that the town is getting bigger and we want to do what's right. So, um, line painting, we're doing more painting as far as with the crosswalks, so people, you know, can see them. We, you know, we're trying to do, uh, the stop lines, more stop lines. Um, we're doing, um, town, township buildings, parking lots like P A L, we're, we're doing this, you know, we're trying to save money. Um, and last year we did a lot of painting. Um, actually Jimmy Walsh was the one that wanted us to start painting more. Um, so we got two machines, so we could do two or three different colors. And now we're pretty much painting the whole town. It's, it's looking really great. But more importantly, we want to keep the streets safe. We want people to see the crosswalks. We don't want anybody got for to get hit. Um, and they definitely stand out more. So that's something that, um, we've been taking a lot of pride in doing. And, um, so, um, there's a, our street signs, as far as our, uh, our sign budget, that's up, that went up because we're replacing our street signs. Um, we're updating them. Um, some of our signs have been up for, for a long time and we're, we have to be compliant and we're trying to get them, um, especially in Lake Parsipony, there's, there's some signs that, quite a few signs that need to be replaced. So, and that's a big expense. Um, going back to the stormwater, um, we purchased another jetback last year. Um, we're going to be, our goal is to have two jetbacks cleaning the drains in the town. We always start with Lake Parsipony first, um, and we do the lake area, and then we move to other parts of the town. Um, and that's... And that's, you know, now that we have two jetbacks, we'll have another crew working from one end to the other, meeting the other one in, in the middle. Because, you know, that's, the town's got over 6,000 catch basins. So we felt the need to order another jetback and that's to suck out the basins and rod I think that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Do you replace the, the signs on, on parks in town?
In the parks?
Yeah. Like signs that are, so I sent this to BA Crime, I don't know if it's made your way, but Lake Hiawatha Park, the signs are covered in graffiti right off lakeshore, if you could put that on, if you said you're replacing signs?
Okay.
Okay, all right, just, I've noticed that.
Okay.
I think we talked more about, I'm sorry, Councilman, I thought we talked more about the, the flag.
And the streetlights. Yeah, I think I also included.
I don't remember the signs, it's my fault.
It's all right, no, it was a while ago.
I'd like to add one more thing. Our asphalt crew, right now we have five guys that go out daily. We do a lot of work for the water department because, you know, whenever they have a water main break, we put it on our list and we patch them. Perfect example, yesterday, there was two water main breaks and they needed to get patched right away. So I had to pull my guys off the road to do it, they were doing potholes yesterday. I had to stop them from doing that and I had to have them do two water patches. So I would like to get at least a few more guys for the road department. We, I think we already have to replace five. You know, I'd like to get the numbers up since the town is growing and we have been having a lot of water main breaks. I would like to have our own, a separate pothole crew just to go out and do potholes because I do realize the roads are bad. I mean, especially after the winter we had, it was, it was really, it was tough. So that's something that, you know, now that I'm superintendent, I would really like to focus on our roads to make the roads better. And I, we have, we have a great asphalt crew. The guys do a great job.
Would this budget help you accomplish that goal?
As long as I get five or six more guys, yeah.
Just realized, we don't have the breakdown of the individuals.
Oh, I understand.
So we only see your department. I did ask BA Crime for that and he said he will provide that, I think, you know, a few of us wanted that.
Yeah.
So we don't see your vacancies and, and whatnot.
No, I understand.
But so that's a very important priority is filling potholes and having people pulled off to go do other competing assignments throughout town is important.
And it happens often, not just in the asphalt crew, it happens on the drainage crew too.
So is the budget as it stands though, is my question, would that help you, is there, is it able to fi- hire for five people in this current budget or no?
I don't believe so.
Across the department, across the whole department.
Yeah.
There's a potential for it, but in, in this particular division, no. We didn't budget four or five. But we're going to work on that.
One of the things I asked the police when they were here, it's probably appropriate to all of you, and I mentioned this last year, the high schools we have, partnership with Community College of Morris and VOTAC, you have kids that are coming out that are skilled welders, plumbers, electricians, that are looking for roles and jobs. You have kids that are not going to be going to college potentially, maybe they're going to go work at a, you know, restaurant or something like that. And you all have an opportunity to, to kind of come to them and say, hey, would you think about a career in the town you grew up in? You have benefits, you have a pension system that you're building into. Has anyone considered or have you guys partnered with the schools or the VOTAC? And I keep going back to Community College because my, my kid graduated with criminal justice degree, but the kids that were in there were literally welders, plumbers, HVAC people that are going to go out and look for jobs. If they can't find one, they're going to go wait tables. In our town, I heard you say we need talented people to come in. These are 18-year-old kids who probably would take $15 an hour with pension and benefits. You're giving them a career path. Have we done that?
We have not, but we do have a clean communities program. And we have actually hired, some of our employees are from clean communities. And the older, the older kids have a chance to go on a crew and get some experience on a crew, whether it be asphalt, whether it be drainage. And I'm talking kids over 18.
Yeah.
Okay? And some of them pick it up like quick and they want to, they like it, you know, and they're doing, you know, it's hands-on every day. And some of them want to have a career here. And we've gotten quite a few really good kids from clean communities. Not just in our department, they've gone to other departments as well.
Do you offer internships?
The clean communities.
I don't, I don't.
So, so the school though, will allow kids to leave early to start careers? So they, our schools allow that. Well, behind the hills have a program that become your internship, that they get credit for going to school. Because again, they don't want to be a physicist at NASA, they want to go and start a career.
Yeah.
More than happy to introduce you to two folks I spoke to, I know we've made that connection here internally, but more than happy to connect you folks with them too.
Okay.
I think that would be handled by the mayor's office though, no?
Yeah, it is.
I'll reconnect you mayor with.
The council is due to reach out to us on, on that specific. And the clean community program is also a grant that we get from, we get a grant for the clean communities and we, and like you said, we've gotten many great workers from the clean communities. But I understand what Councilman McGrath is saying. So if we can partner, I'll speak to the councils that handle both high schools.
Also, Councilman, the store department, specifically Craig and the store department has had a lot of contact with the VOTAC and trying to bring employees on board today.
Great.
Have a comment?
Sure.
The, you, when I first got here, I thought that would be a great idea also. I went over, visited with the people, went to tool with the, never the carpenters, the electrician teachers and so on. I offered, I said, you know, we have to treat them well, we have electricians, bring, ever back. So, you know, after a while you say.
I'll work with the mayor on that. Because, because they were looking to have the town participate in their school job fairs, all sorts of things.
Well, I'm telling you, I went over, basically, it's a thing, but my store has an opportunity and it just, nothing came of it.
All right.
Okay, guys, thank you very much for the presentation. Next we have our building department.
Council President, we have Terry Colletta, he's our construction official. He's the head of the department. As you know, it's probably our busiest department in a lot of ways. Rarely are there people going there on a hot streak and happy. They're there looking for something very immediate and on a timeframe that is not always in conjunction with the workload. They deal with well over 3,000 applications received each year. They've, last year they did over 15,000 inspections, over 13,000 plan reviews completed, and that's including re-reviews. A lot of times there are developers that put plans in and they're not completely done or they're not done the way that the code tells them they need to be done. So they need to be resubmitted at times. So Terry is a, a, a town resident who cares about this town and has done a great job for us here. Terry Colletta.
So as you know, we're a regulatory division, we're supposed to inform.
Yeah, just, all right, just speaking to the mic.
Is it on?
Should be on, right? Say hello, testing?
Testing.
No?
Tell you, man, it's not Justin, man. Just tapped it.
How about putting that in the buzzer?
All right, so as you know, we enforce the state of New Jersey uniform construction code, which so makes us a regulatory division. So as Mr. Crime said, not everybody's always happy, but we have a large office, probably one of the largest ones around, which is befitting the largest town in Morris County, right? So we're big, so it's, it can be cumbersome at times. We're larger than probably all the other towns that surround us. So it's a lot. You, you talk about the construction going on and you're absolutely right, if I was to show you the list here of all the major projects from January, there's a lot of them. I have three pages of projects. While most towns have one of these big housing units going that the mayor talked about, Mount Oral, right? We have six or seven and more going. Warehouses, all kinds of things. So we are super, super busy. So moving forward, we were here last year and we had this same discussion and we talked about the things we were trying to do to move forward and some of those have come to fruition. We have moved forward with our, our software, all inspections to comply with state law are being requested online because they have to be in writing. We are just about ready to start doing some permitting online. There are some things on the state level with other agencies that hold us back. Most of my operating expense, it doesn't really change that much. It fluctuates a little bit. You'll see, when you look at it, we tweak things here or there. There are things in there that you'll say, well, you know, you didn't spend any money on that last year. Well, you have to have it because you don't know when you need it. If I need a consultant, there's got to be money for it. Most years I don't need a consultant. So legal went up a little bit because we're trying to prepare for the future because there's just times when you don't use a lot and there's other times when you're at the board of appeals or whatever, need to move to collect and it is what it is. So there's not a lot there that changes, right? Our capital, and again, you know, we're not buying big machinery or anything, obviously the, the big money is in salaries and, and we can talk about that if we want to. The capital, we, cars, any vehicles, we're hiring more inspectors, any vehicles, I have vehicles that are 11, 12 years old now. And I like to get rid of vehicles that are 10 years, so we get rid of them before we have problems, either hand them down or get rid of them if they're non-viable. So I'm already borrowing a vehicle from fire prevention and a vehicle from zoning because, you know, and it takes so long to get a vehicle. I got one, I have one on water and it takes eight, nine months to get a vehicle. I'm sure you heard from the police department, right? It is what it is. So the other big capital for us would be software upgrades with moving forward to try to do permitting online and plan review and getting a plan review screens that are touchscreens, you know. The goal is eventually to go paperless. Right? We're, we're running out of room and we, if anybody goes downstairs, you'll see, we have carts filled with plans in the lunchroom, which is, it's a lot. So the, the goal is eventually to get rid of all that. I'll probably be retired before it happens, but that's, that's what we're moving towards. So those are the big expenditures. And it's, we're in the same place we were last year, we're just moving forward. We've accomplished a lot. This administration has been really, really good in the 25 years I've been here. We have more staff than we've ever had. And that might sound like, oh, wow, you know, a lot of staff, we should be cutting. We are so busy and in, in the decades I've been here, the state, the DCA has come in several times, at least two that I remember, and they've done audits, they say, you need more staff. And, you know, administrations would hire one or two. It was never enough. We needed 10 and they hired two, right? So the, I had to actually thank the BA several months back last year. I said, you know, the first time in, as 10 years, as a construction official, the first time I could say, we're adequately staffed. That's the first time. Said I was huge. There was no way, people did try, but there was no way they were ruining my week because I said, no, adequately staffed.
But since then we have retirees, people have retired.
Could I use more people? Absolutely. But it's always a balance because we don't want so many people that if we slow down, that we have to lay people off, right? You want to lose people to attrition. So it, it seems like we're big, we are. We don't have a lot of, a lot of fluff. I could use some more people. We have two open positions that we're trying to fill and it's hard to find people. All right, because all, all my people, you know, we, they're licensed professionals, basically. And the economy seems to be doing okay. People are building, they don't want to come work, you know, because they're making good money as contractors. So that's where we're at. I'm here for anything you want to talk about or any questions you have.
Any questions from council or administration?
You said you wanted to get some inspectors though.
So I, I have one building, so we, we just, one building, my building subcode official retired. So we're promoting to one of the inspectors to subcode. I would like to replace that inspector because I, one, we're super, super busy, a lot of stuff going on, I could use them, but I have another inspector, senior inspector, has been here the longest 30, 32 years, I think. And so he's, I know he's going to retire at some point. And I like to get, because we're such a big town, there's a lot going on, we like to try to get people in and have it overlap and get them up to speed with how we do things, you know, because there's, there's a lot. There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, so we want to train them, let them train with some of the best people we have before they retire. So that way, when he does retire, I don't need to look to hire people again. So that's one. I have a part-time electrical inspector, it's the only area where we're really suffering, we're, we're delayed and, and it's, we, we did, we were trying to get somebody, we actually had an interview scheduled, was it Monday? I don't know, we had an interview and the guy never showed up.
Oh my goodness.
So, but we had a guy who, who, who left and we just want to replace him.
So electrical.
Terry, do you have any numbers to share, like on permits issued, how long it takes to get a permit in town, you know, average time?
It's, it's hard to give you a number. You know, I could throw out there, you know, eight weeks, 16 weeks. Some permits, you know, they're going to be out in a couple days. Other permits have been there for a year. So it all depends, it varies. So we're, we're actually pretty good. I would say the, the average permit is getting out in, you know, four or five weeks, maybe less, depending on how complicated it is. We have some projects where they come in and, you know, let's say it takes a couple weeks to get their review, just because we're busy, vacations, whatever, let's say it takes two, three weeks to get the, you get the review, you do it, you, they all need corrections. Very few, I don't know what the percentage is, but I would say it's not even double digits, probably very few permits or applications come in where they don't need corrections.
And it's interesting you say that because some municipalities have set up like a business committee whereby people from the construction department sit on it and before an applicant actually submits their plans, it gives them that ability to, you know, level with the local official and remove, you know, them submitting it only to hear back in a week that it's incorrect, then for them to revise it so they're able to submit it upfront. Is there any thought in, in trying to do something like that in Parsippany?
So part of that, we do pre-construction, pre-construction meetings with other divisions in town when they have those meetings and we work together on that. We try to head off a lot of things. As far as reviewing those in advance, no, because I review it then or I review when you submit it, I still got to review it. So now I'm going to review it twice, I might as well just review when you, when you bring it in. We're not, we're not equipped to do, I don't have the staff to do extra reviews. It's, it's hard enough to go to those pre-construction meetings because that takes a lot of time because when an inspector or a subcode official is at that meeting, they're not inspecting, they're not doing plan review, they're really educated. And that's a great thing if you have people and time to do it, but it's not our job. It's not, it's not, that's not the state mandate for us to do that. So yeah, you could do that, but I would need extra staff to do that.
Is there any thought on maybe shifting the schedule to allow for people to do it on the weekends or to come in early or to stay late? So applicants, you know, will have greater flexibility and, you know, not burden you guys if you have a, you know?
So there, there's absolutely, so there's a couple things there. So there's absolutely, so there's a couple of things there. That's kind of a complicated issue. So the state requires us to be open certain hours. So we're already mandated basically nine to five, right? So now, if you want to go outside those hours, which is not a bad idea, if you want to provide customer service, but then again, how do you do that? So I would love to be open early when the contractors are working. I'd love to be open early and late so homeowners can drop things off before they go to work or pick them up, right? But then the cashier's got to be open. Then you have to have extra hours or extra staff to, so you're talking about an expense. You know, I'm open to it, but the administration, that would be huge.
But you're talking about overtime on the weekends.
And the problem with overtime, as the mayor knows, is it's great, and we're doing a lot of it now, which is helping us get, stay caught up, but you burn people out. So, you know, it's tough. You know, overtime is a good stopgap, but if you're doing overtime all the time, and we've been doing a lot of overtime as a whole, right? We're limiting it to five hours a week so we keep the budget constraints down, right? We're not paying time and a half because they're not doing over 40 hours, but it's still a huge expense. And again, not everybody wants to do it, right? And then you burn people out. So, yeah, I could have people come in every Saturday, but who wants to do it, you know?
Do you think making a transition to a fully digital permitting system would help us?
Absolutely. It's huge. It's huge, and that's what we want to do. And I'll tell you some of the living fact, it's not us. We want to do it. We want to be there. We've wanted to be there for the last five years. But part of the problem is the DCA does not talk to, who does the plumbers and the electricians for? I think it's a consumer.
Consumer affairs.
Consumer affairs. So there's two pieces of paper that need a crib on it, plumbing and electrical. They don't have a digital signature. So the architects and the engineers have digital signatures. The DCA said you could take digital signatures. Okay, how do I take in a plumbing application that needs to be sealed if they don't have digital signatures? Yeah, so, you know, it's just a slow process, but that's the direction we're heading in. We're about ready, I think we got the idea from Newark because they were trying, they were starting with a limited permit application online, tank removals. We do a lot of tank removals in town, so we're about ready to start doing tank removals and see how that works and get our feet wet. But eventually, I mean, that's how it's going to develop, eventually. Right now, you send plans to the DCA, you send them electronically. They don't want paper plans. And they have a digital that they put on here, so you can print them out, you have them. So we are very close to that because, I mean, all the architects, they all, everything's done digitally, it's all k. So why can't we take it in that way? So a number of years you've approved, we put in the capital to get big plan review screens, touchscreens to do that, and we just haven't been able to purchase them because we're not there yet.
We do have one, one.
Right, yes, we did. So we got one, it's a test case that our director, the zoning officer, is using this. We use bluving, we have it already, so she's been trying that out, and that's been very successful. So if the capital gets approved this year, we're going to get some more of those, and that we're heading in that direction. I think that's going to be huge. We're already just doing the inspection requests online. My office used to answer the phone like IT would tell us, easily 250 calls a day. That has already been cut down. I don't have numbers, I don't have, but the phone would ring off the hook. Now, that's already eased up. Yes, we still have one person that has to schedule all those inspections, but it's one person doing from online instead of two, three people answering the phone to schedule inspection and now concern somebody at the counter or answer a phone call about something else. So that's already been a huge plus of starting that.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, separate from probably the infrastructure, which, you know, I hear the most about from residents is the permitting process. When we bought our home in October, and I needed a contractor to do some work, and I called this contractor, and the woman asked for my address, I said, I'm on High Ridge Road, Randolph. She goes, oh, thank God, you're not from Persippany. And I was like, why is that? She goes, oh, because it's impossible to get anything done there. So it's still a very real reputation unfairly, you know, or fairly, I know you guys are working hard, you're inundated, but it's definitely, I think, a really big area of opportunity when we close that gap.
Reputation's diehard.
Yeah.
But we've been, the administration has been moving forward to try to make it better, better customer service. I would love to be able to have extended hours. I'd love to have more staff. Again, you know, we have, I think we have to balance that because I don't want to be in that position where, you know, the mayor of the BA comes and says, hey, you know, we need to slow it down, and, you know, we either got to raise fees or lay people off, and, you know, so we try.
But I would just like to add one thing, because I've spoken to you with regards to this. It's not always the construction or building's fault. Sometimes these contractors get stuff sent back to them to meet requirements, and they never get back to our department. And they like to use that excuse as a way to say, well, we won't not get permits. Well, if you just listen to when we send back information to you to make sure the architects are done right and everything's done right. Now, we experienced that, and I saw it for the first time. And then I went through the emails, and you sent them information, and they never got back. So sometimes that's, that's actually, probably a lot of the times, that's what happens.
Yeah, people's professionals just, yeah, and they're blaming us, yeah.
And unfortunately, you get caught in the trap. So the professional or the contractor doesn't want to tell the homeowner, right? So the homeowner just knows, well, they, you know, I haven't got my permit yet. And the homeowner, a lot of times, the homeowners get an epiphany when they call, and they'll call and say, well, why is it taking, and we'll go down the list and say, well, we talked to your contractor, we talked to your architect, and they haven't got back. Unfortunately, it's just the nature of it.
Any other questions from council or administration? Okay, Terry, fantastic job. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did a fantastic job. There you go.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm here for, you know? I gotta, I gotta make this part of the team, man. This is team, you know what I mean?
I'll wait and check.
There you go. Water Department up next.
So we have Sean Andres, Kevin Bousant, and Greg Shimon here from the Water Department. You have seen them and heard from them many times, a couple of times this year. In fact, they deal with a very important issue, and that's our water, and making sure that it's of good quality. And they're really doing a lot of good work for the township and a lot of busy work. And they're really on the front lines with a lot of big issues because we're dealing with the, these unfunded mandates that we've received from the state and the federal government to deal with PFAS and lead replacement, and they're working hard at it.
Thank you, Jamie. Just got done telling Terry did a fantastic job.
Thank you, Jamie.
Messed up the mic.
Good evening, members of the Township Council, residents, and colleagues. The Township of Persippany Troy Hills owns and operates what is considered a large public community water system. Public utilities such as this water department are regulated by the federal EPA and State Department of Environmental Protection. This department is in charge of and is responsible for the supply, chemical treatment, and distribution of safe drinking water throughout the township. Approval of this budget will ensure that the utility is appropriately staffed and equipped to maintain water quality, adequate fire protection, and uninterrupted delivery of water to the township's residents and ratepayers, which speaks directly to this year's budget statement requesting $3.6 million in operating and $9.1 million in capital appropriation for this fiscal year. As a township and utility, we have accomplished a lot over the past calendar year, investing over $14.6 million in capital appropriations. Number one, firm capacity. Firm capacity refers to the water supply available even when the largest source of supply is out of service, ensuring reliable water delivery during peak demands. The township's firm capacity in December of 2024 was at 9.2 million gallons of water per day. Due to the aggressive capital improvement approach we have taken in conjunction with this council's support, approval of public funds, and the township's borrowing capacity, we were able to successfully increase our own source supplies, resulting in a total firm capacity of 11.6 million gallons of water per day. This is an increase of supply of 2.4 million gallons, or 26%, securing our resources for future development and our growing population. The increase in firm capacity is a direct result of the replacement and redevelopment of underproducing wells, as well as mechanical and process improvements made to our treatment facilities and booster pumping stations throughout the water system. Infrastructure improvements and distribution system resiliency. Our infrastructure is aging and well past its service life. Last year, we successfully replaced 6,000 linear feet of water main in some of the more vulnerable areas in our system, adding to the resiliency of the distribution network. Lead and galvanized service line replacements. To remain in compliance with the state's revised lead and copper rule, we completed Phase One of the township's lead and galvanized service line replacement program, keeping us on track to get the lead out by 2031. This utility requires significant investment in building and maintaining infrastructure, such as the ones previously discussed. To cover the cost of providing a safe and reliable supply of water, our billing and tax collections office must be able to bring in revenue, which relies heavily on accurate metering. Accurate metering reduces unaccounted for water and drives utility revenue. Phase One of the township's meter replacement program was completed last year with Phase Two just around the corner. Storage capacity. The Water Department operates and maintains 10 steel water storage tanks at a total capacity of 10 and a half million gallons. The township stores its water strategically by gradient zones and at higher elevations in order for gravity to push the water downward, generating the necessary pressure to flow through pipes and into homes. We invest over $2 million per year towards the maintenance of these tanks. In an effort to reduce total costs incurred to the township, help stabilize our budget by spreading costs over time without new debt and eliminate the risk of a coating system failure, such as our 287 storage tank, in coordination with the finance and purchasing departments, we plan to enter into a public-private partnership with a water quality and tank maintenance consultant through a competitive RFP process. PFAS. As demonstrated in our PFAS feasibility master planning study, PFAS is present in our water supply, currently at levels that meet the Safe Drinking Water Act standards. Compliance to the new PFAS MCL is 2029. To date, we have successfully commissioned two PFAS treatment plants, with construction for an additional plant anticipated to start later this year. Planning and design of a 1.7 MGD plant is in progress, with an anticipated construction start date in 2026. Persippany remains a leader in the drinking water industry. We are in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act and are proactive towards the operation and maintenance of the township's supplies, treatment facilities, and infrastructure. $14.5 million in capital spends last year brought us to where we are today. $9.1 million in capital investments this year will achieve our goals. By working closely with our CFO and business administrator, we have already made the strategic cuts to not only keep this utility self-liquidating and sustainable, but to reliably deliver safe drinking water to our customers. We are a department of only 30 employees. We operate 34 remote facilities throughout the township and maintain over 280 miles of water main, 2,000 fire hydrants, 4,000 inline gate valves, all of which are required to be inspected, operated, and maintained annually with certification to the NJDEP. We maintain, read, and bill over 15,000 water meters and routinely accommodate and attend to a variety of customer requests. These requests include water quality concerns, leaking service lines, meter failures, high billing queries, new construction inspections, and so on. Outside of the routine maintenance of the system, staff also responds to water supply and distribution-related emergencies 24/7/365. At this time, we're happy to address any questions you may have regarding our 2025 budget statement request. Thank you.
Okay, no questions, huh? Okay, you guys did a fantastic job, a very nice job. Very thorough, thank you, guys.
I need to drink some butter.
Thank you. Sean, fantastic, thank you. Have a great night, guys.
He is. I'm impressed.
Okay, next up is our Sewer Department, Mr. Beckmeyer.
I don't hold it, yeah, power early, I don't, fuck, ready, bud.
Yeah, it's all right.
Got to be ready, got to be ready at all times.
So, Council President, we have Joe Beckmeyer, who does not need a microphone, so it doesn't matter if it's working or not. Everything, the calibers are.
He's supposed to be here, but he was, I guess he was in here. It's good to be here this year in person as opposed to last year when I was.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Open the phone. But a few things, though, if I just comment on. One is, we talked before about the training. It is difficult to get properly capable. We went that route, trying to do that, to try to build some sort of relationship with the VOTAC. We have had a few interns come in from the VOTAC, or we find out we have better luck when we have someone that already has a year or two of college under them and they're into biology or something like that. I've also, in the past, I don't know how many superintendents we've been through, where after we bring in other towns, come to us for tours of the treatment plant. I said, that's a good idea, let me talk, I forget how many years ago it was, and never hear an answer. So it's like, I'm offering, other people are doing it, we have tours set up, we will, you know, science club or something like that, nothing. So if anybody knows anybody, we're always anxious to tell everybody what a great job we're doing. I love to talk, so I agree the opportunity, but even I will need the tours, but I have other people who have been doing it and know the actual ins and outs in a way that's, I guess, more user than I, than I would be.
I know somebody from Flushing, Queens. Flushing, get it?
The, in the budget here, it's basically a flat operational budget. The biggest number increase in there is health insurance, which is about 1.5 million. Everything else is sort of, sort of calm. And part of things like that, and we have a little chemicals, about 150,000 or higher, and we go into ward treatment with hospital, you know, with O1, and it's like we move 200,000. We load our electrical charges, and part of it was the capital improvement we had a couple of years ago, pump station number four, I don't know how much water we were dumping down the drain every day, so we've eliminated that use of water, which helps us and also helps the township for using it in other places. Also, manpower, we don't have to go to inspect it around the weekends, all the headaches we had because the equipment was so old. The electric costs associated with that, pumps ran, you know, we had a 50 horsepower pump, at least one running 24/7. So those things build up, and that was gotten rid of, so that we reduce the cost. And if I can, there's many times where developers like to put in pump stations because they're cheaper to dig in deep trenches to put a pipe down, so they don't need a pump station. And any place I can eliminate a pump station, I'll try to because it's just another, another headache. You don't need a call Saturday night at 3:00 in the morning, you know, your power went out, what's going on with the pump station? Because we send someone out to check it to make sure it goes back to normal operation. I would hate to have it that, you know, all of a sudden, somebody calls me the next morning, you know, we got a flood of sewers running down the street because the pump station isn't working. So we're on top, try to be on top of that all the time, but it's important we provide that level of service. One of the questions before about contractors, we had a, I know Justin brought up today, there was a contractor putting a sewer in that never called for a permit, never called for a mark out, never called, and then all of a sudden, he tells the inspector out there, oh, yeah, I went to this department to get it, did you check? Oh, no, he never did. Then you said, oh, no, I went to the, he called. So sometimes you have contractors tell stories. And I think that's more often than anyone in a township not trying to trying to do their best job possible. So, you know, that's, it's just one of those challenges that are out there. But if someone wants to tell me this will be easy, because you're dealing with people, you know? Sometimes they get in the way. One of, this past year, some of the things we did was, we replaced the Russellwood Pump Number Six, and we're proceeding with one and four. A few years ago, when they redid the treatment plant, spent 20, 30, 40 million dollars, and they put new, unusually efficient motors on, the pumps, but they never changed the pumps. But you had pumps that were 20, 30 years old, and so in order to get an efficient operation, you have to have both parts of the process, the motor and the pump, operating good. We had one pump where all of a sudden the impeller, which actually pushes the water, sheen off of the shaft. Now, we looked, we didn't find anything in it, no cobblestones, no timber or anything else, but it happens sometimes when the equipment gets old. We've been working with the, a couple of years ago, we always got an EPA grant for about $3, $4 million for pump station four. But what happened was, we were too quick, and the EPA wouldn't give us the money, because we had to, most of it constructed before the EPA could review and approve it. Review and approve it. Sometimes we have these projects down in New York and in Trenton, and it's like, well, you know, we submitted this like six months ago, what happened? Well, this guy was on sick, this was on leave, and this was here. We apologize, and we'll get to it. And I guess we just got forgotten about it or whatever. But we were able to now, through discussion with EPA, to not lose that money, but we've got money, it will be spent for a couple change orders for that project, which was about $400,000 or something like that. And they've already submitted that, so we're trying to get that money in. And the replacement of the Lake Hiawatha Pump Station, replacement of the new road pump station. So we're not going to lose the grant money, we'd be able to use it in some other spaces. The Lake Hiawatha Pump Station, again, everything takes much longer than you would hope. We started that about three or four years ago, and we're ready to go to bed now. So there's all these challenges. Again, getting the grant money didn't help, because then we switched to go to the Infrastructure Trust and so on. So there's other obstacles you have to get over, but I thought if we can save a couple million dollars, bring in any grant money, we should make whatever changes we need to roll with the punches we have. We began high-voltage testing at the plant, I don't know who was here, in 2014 or so, 2013, when they had the fire down at the treatment plant, because the high-voltage test, we couldn't, we was never tested. We've gotten a little behind with that, with the, I don't want to say COVID, but things like that along the way. So we're at a point now of getting that back. We've done certain repairs already, but there were leaks of the, in the transformer. I thought by now, there'd be no PCBs left in the oil in the transformers, but we had that replaced, even though I thought that was out, you know, 40 years ago. So these two guys are here, they kicked me, in case I'm talking too long, or I forget to say something. So we got extra time because of water.
Somebody kick him.
You're on the clock.
Somebody kick him, huh?
Yeah, we're doing the high-voltage testing. Puttystone Heights, Phase Two, is just about completed, and we have a sewer system going in line there, so hopefully we'll have, is available now for Phase One, and pretty soon, Phase Two. So that'll be anybody with specific tanks up there, and I know there are a few that are failing, getting old and so on, they'll be able to hook up. Southeast, into South Sapping, Interceptor, that's a pipe that's been in the ground for over 50 years. Many manholes we've not get to the scene yet. We've never inspected it. We don't look at this area in the, as they go through the Wildlife Preserve and along Route 80. So now we split up the project, we're doing half of it on Route 80, and the other half in the Wildlife Preserve. It seems like the DOT is easy to deal with, to get some of these things done. Working with legal counsel to try to jump through some hoops. There are so many challenges, and the issue is that if we don't, you know, bite on and hope and keep going, being diligent to get these things done, you know, all of a sudden, it'll be 60, 70 years, and then all of a sudden, something will collapse and say, "How come you guys never did anything?" And, you know, well, we're trying to get ahead of that, because there are many issues, as I mentioned before, with the old pump. We changed the motor, we don't change the pump. Well, if you're spending, you know, 25 million, why not spend 26 and get the things done? I mean, that's my, you know, in trying to get things in government completed is difficult. So, you know, I always like to say, we're running like a private company. You can't run like a private company, you've got too many hoops you've got to jump through. There's too many rules and regulations we have to follow. So the, we have to keep going, and like I said, some of these pump station number four, that was like an eight-year project. It just takes so long to get things done. We're ready ventilation improvements in the raw sewage pump building in Wetwell. Again, requirement, all the equipment is old, failed, wasn't ever replaced, and that's required by the DDP standards, also safety standards. The erosion improvement should begin soon. One of the things you have is that, you know, nowadays, there's many things to make operations more efficient, electrical usage more efficient, whether it be BFDs. In our process, we have special diffusers, so you can find bubbles, you get better oxygen transfer for the bacteria. Well, that's all well and good, but then, they only have a useful life. So with the other ones, if you had a stainless steel one, it might last for 50 years. These, you know, you look at the, in the original O and M manual, it said it lasts for 15 years or 18 years. Now you look at the manufacturer's warranty, they said maybe 12 years. So we're in a process before they all fail, have that all replaced, been upgraded, so there's bubbles and so on. And the long-term biosolids project is still under design. I think everybody, at one time or another, got a presentation of that one. Again, taking a long time. I hope you by next year will be able to get that, rather than sending our sludge to, right now it's going to Ohio to Orlando. We will be able to generate, we'll write the floods down, probably half the amount of trucks leaving the plant every day, and we'd be generating, methane for heating and generating electricity. Also discussions with others in the area, in the neighborhood, to bring food waste to the plant, if possible, to generate more methane, and also discussion with the gas company to possibly sell some of the gas to them. So these are the things we're trying to do, sort of pie in the sky compared to what we, you know, what more function is, but if there's an opportunity, we'll take a look at it. I think the biggest thing in my capital budget is, we pay for half the water meters, I guess, Water Department, we put in a million dollars a year, because they use the water, water meters also generate sewer bills, and they collect for us and so on. Another, well, sewage replacement, let's see. I think that's about it.
Okay, nice job. No, no, good job, Joe. That's very good job.
Gene is kicking you.
Do you know why the health expense went up about $200,000? Oh, it's actually more. Sorry. Yeah, more than that. Yeah.
Hi, Justin, that is the sewer's portion of our health insurance for the, like, the overall township, as well as their employees and retirees. So our health insurance went up about 6% between all four budgets. The state is seeing double-digit increases, so we are benefiting from that. But those are costs that are just going to continue to rise, kind of out of our control.
So can I ask you a question, too? So, and I should have asked Sean this same question. When you think about the parts, think about the chemicals you're acquiring, how many are here in America and how many are outside America? Are you taking into account what could be additional costs from shipping out of country into country?
Basically, the, all the chemicals we use right now are pericytic acid inspection, and it will generate manufacturing in this country.
Parts as well? So motors, everything, everything's built in the US?
We have a few, in the nixes, we Eurodrive. I don't know how much of that was manufactured outside, but a lot of the, most of the equipment is manufactured here. I haven't really heard any issues that anyone has.
Just asking. Maybe you read the news. There might be some cost coming, so.
Canada might be, one, with raw sewage pumps, as many other industries, rather than have the materials constructed, the items constructed here, they would ship it out to one other country. A big manufacturer of raw sewage replacement part was a company in Canada.
Okay.
But I haven't heard of anything recently, or how that would affect them.
Okay. Now, just curious in your budget, Sean, maybe the same question for you. Is that a concern at all? You can just say yes or no, we can catch up later.
I haven't heard of any issues that's going to be a problem. I know over the past 10 years, a lot of things have gone up.
Yeah.
And a lot of it was with COVID, and we saw big jumps in the equipment cost around that and so on.
Yep.
But recently, we haven't.
So if I'm guessing, if I'm hearing you right, Matt, because this is a question I had overall about mechanical budgets, water, wastewater, is there's a lot of uncertainty in how things, regulations, tariffs, taxes, federal cuts are coming down, and have we thought about that in these budgets, or we're just going to wait and see?
Well, unfortunately, I don't know what they are.
Yeah.
Originally, we were told that our electricity was going to go up, and I thought I was going to have to raise my electric bill 20%, you know, put it for the thing. And since we've done things and we underspent the electric so much last year, I said, "How can I ask for 20% on the top one?" I was hoping I'd leave it. I leave it where it is, and hopefully, unfortunately, you know, everybody asks like this, is it exact science? But a lot of this is an educated guessing game. You know, where are we? If someone called, no one's going to call you up, and I'm going to raise your prices, you know, 20%, so if you buy a new pump, be ready. Because I don't even know if I have to, if I'm going to buy a new pump.
No, I understand that about operation. The long-term biosolid contract, that's been years. I don't want to say COVID, but that's part of the problem, because it was before COVID that you started talking about it, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. The, a little history, the township had an agreement with a company called Synergro, and Synergro was going to take all of, they were going to rebuild these swages in Synergro, at the treatment plant. Was going to take all the possibility sludge at the price, and also was going to bring in additional sludge from other municipalities to the plant for incineration, and they were going to make, I guess, a lot of money. Well, before they got too far off the ground, I don't know if we'd be a pollution regulations or what happened, and they pulled out of the contract. And, you know, at the time, we decided, trying to force a contractor to do something when they don't want to be there is, that it's just headaches over and over again. So they pulled out, and the town for about a year and a half, but it was priced on disposal. However, with COVID, we went through the process of doing an RFP to hire a consultant, actually go through what we should be doing with our biosolids long term, and that way, anywhere from nothing, keep sending, or send trucks to the St. Valley, you know, or sort of a lot of different things. We came up with a plan to rebuild the digestors, which we have destructed there. And hopefully, from a financial standpoint and also from a environmental standpoint, not having trucks going up and down, plus of that, generating natural gas that we can then use, and maybe sell, you know, it's an advantage. And if we can partner with someone else that has food waste.
So when is that predicted to be complete?
I'm hoping next year we go to bed on it.
Okay.
I'm hoping, you know. There were, just like I said, there are many, many issues we face, and we do it. And, you know, one of the, I guess, one of, I don't know, also maybe a, a, a good point I have, is that some engineers, you start a project and you run it to the wall, well, they're going to keep going because, oh, I don't want to tell anybody I ran it to a wall. My thing is, uh-oh, we ran it, let's go this way, and we maybe have a better product. So that's what I always try to do, is how do we, what's best for the township long term? Not just so much, you know, it makes it easier for us, because it's not an easy business.
I know.
No one wants to be in this business. Nobody goes to college. I remember when I was in, in college, walking down the halls, and I said, "What are those guys? Oh, they're sanitary engineers. Sanitary engineers, why would you ever want to do that?" And here I am, over my head.
That's right.
Literally.
Usually don't look to be in it.
No, but I used to be in it, so I get it.
You understand.
Any other questions? Joe, fantastic job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else want to say anything? No? Tell the joke or something?
No, we don't, we don't need the mic. Believe it or not, the mic catches you. Thank you, guys.
That's okay.
No, you're not late. We're early. Relax there, buddy. Take it easy.
You would have been right on time, actually.
Don't worry. Joe did a good job.
Okay, up next, we have the Knoll Utility.
Council President, we have Joe Janarone, who's doing a lot of good work up there at the Knoll, changing things around, and he's here to tell you about it.
Just turn it on. It keeps going off for some reason. There you go.
Hi. Can you hear me or no?
Yeah.
Joe Janarone Jr., Maintenance Superintendent, ADA Compliance Officer, and in my part-time, I'm a gentleman, I go to the Knoll Country Club. Not really part-time, but. When the mayor asked me to take over in 2022 in the fall, he expressed concern because they were in the red for the past few years, and I'm happy to say we've been in the black ever since. And I checked with Angel hit today, and yes, we are. So we're doing good. Our team is doing good. We have 773 members. We have 508 on a waiting list. That's to show that the golf course is in great shape, and everybody wants to play there. So our revenue's been steady up, and of course, we depend on the weather, and if the weather's good, then we're making money. What else do I want to say here? I think that's it, unless you have any questions. Oh, good.
Any questions for Mr. General?
I just want to say, the members, yeah, I'm just trying to think if I have everything else. The members, the waiting list, nobody wants to keep up their membership, that's the problem. Our waiting list is building, building, and building, and nobody wants to stop playing there, so.
That's a good problem.
Like I said, it's a team effort.
Any questions from council?
I just want to make a comment tonight. Last night, approximately, excuse me, allergies, at 12:30, there was a fire in the kitchen of the Knoll.
At night?
Yeah, 12:30 at night. So I was there with Joe, and they got on it right away, had rapid recovery come out. There was more water damage, the actual fire, the sprinklers put out the fire immediately, but there is some damage done, but I don't know if they reopened the grill room yet. I just want to make the council aware.
Was the caterer cooking, or was?
No, that was closed.
It was closed. There was electrical receptacle near the appliances in the kitchen, in the grill room kitchen. The fire was put out right away. Like I said, the sprinkler put out the fire, and...
You can't shut the door though.
So basically, what happened was, most of the water went down the drain in the kitchen, thank God, but some of the water went into the grill room, into the carpeting, and then went downstairs into the pro shop. Customer's ceiling tile's wet, so there's fans running now. They cleaned up everything, so now we're just waiting for that to dry out. The grill room should be open probably by tomorrow. Nothing's closed, everything is fine, except the grill room until tomorrow. But thank God, between the fire department and...
Sprinkler system.
Joe Beckmeyer still here?
No.
Yeah, here it is.
You know, we talked about different departments, you know, sewer, between the plumber, Chris, and their electrician, John, and we always, we utilize each other. I do anyway, you know, if I need help with the water department, I call them right away, Sean's there. So we all work together on that. So I want to thank Joe for sending his guys over last night. They were over last night helping out and shutting things off, so it worked out great. Thank you.
It did. It was a good team effort. I mean, all the fire districts, and like you said, sewer department was there. Everything was taken care of. you said, sewer department was there. Everything was taken care of immediately because we don't want the place to be closed down, of course. And thank God for the sprinkler system because it extinguished, extinguished it pretty quick. So.
Joe, what, what else do you think we can be doing, uh, at the Knoll Utility to, to increase revenues?
Uh, we talked about miniature golf now. Uh, that's the other thing I wanted to say was, uh, we're, we're almost done with the removal of the pool. So as soon as we get that done, which I hope within the next week, um, we, we have plans on some type of miniature golf indoor. I get a lot of people that want to play pickleball, I mean, outdoor pickleball court. So I'm thinking about that over there maybe too, in that spot where the pool was. Some outdoor pickleball, you know, I don't know, I don't, I never played it before, but apparently it's very popular.
Yeah, it's becoming very popular.
Uh, revenue to increase it, uh, we could increase membership, uh, but you can only get some amount of people playing golf. I can, I can increase it to eight, nine hundred people, but then they're going to have the members go on and not be happy because it's not going to, it'll take six hours to play golf. So we don't want to do that. Uh, but that's what we're thinking about doing for next year.
We had a plan for a, um, miniature golf, my, my, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, which is part of the driving range. And I think there were drawings that were done.
Yes, yeah.
We had studied on that, how much profit the township would make on it, and they never went anywhere.
Yep.
I lost the election.
Any, uh, I'm not, no, any other questions?
Do you, do you know what the status of our golf pro is?
Uh,
Actually, we cannot discuss that.
Okay, next question?
It's a personnel matter.
Yeah, it's a personnel matter. It's not that we don't want to discuss it.
Good. Any other questions from council members? Okay, uh, Mr. General, Joe, you want questions? We can come up with more if you'd like. I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean,
We have forty-five.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to help you out, but you're like, you want questions?
We're in the black. We have five, we have five hundred people looking to become members, so we're good.
Yes. Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, uh, if you, one more. I, I guess you lost your opportunity to speak, Mr. Homiak. No, I'm just kidding. All right, uh, now we're going into the public session. May I please have a motion to open up the public session, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Uh, roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Micella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public to speak on any matter. You have five minutes to speak. Come on up, Nick.
If I could, uh, see without my glasses, um, when they clean these culverts, uh, in these different, uh, places out that collect the trash, who pays for the disposal of, uh, you know, like those pictures I showed you, all that stormwater, all that plastic? So if they actually clean, like the Sullivan Way, uh, he said it, uh, empties out at Troy Metals, but if they clean that, who pays for it? Does that, did all the taxpayers collectively pay for the disposal of that? Or does DOT, uh, pick up the, uh, the bill for the tipping fees and the landfill for all that waste?
Is, is that your only question?
Uh, and the other thing, if, why, why would it be so hard to, for the sewer plant to get food waste with all the restaurants and the homes in this, in this town? Uh, you know, compost, I don't know how many people have compost. I have a compost barrel, so I never have any, any food waste, but I, you know, I throw it around and, uh, you know, on the, on the property for the grass or whatever. But, uh, that seems like it could, could be encouraged and a, actually have a, an outcome.
It will be. It will be encouraged. That's what they're talking about in the future.
And, uh, the thing that disturbed me a little bit with the parks, when they, with the money, they said sprays and fertilizers. So there, there you have pollutants right there and sprays. I, I actually saw them spraying in the Hiawatha Park one time and the, and the barrel in the truck actually said herbicide. And I, I don't think that that's necessary, uh, uh, to be used in our park systems. Like, there's, uh, putting out weeds and cracks. That's, you, you mean, uh, labor. And if they can consider, uh, like trash abatements, like on South Broadway and historic district, instead of like maybe cutting the grass too much, you know, because, uh, the grass is going to grow anyway, so, uh, you have employees that were paid for to, to cut the grass somewhere where, where the town looks, uh, degraded by the, uh, you know, by, by litter. But is it really that important to cut, cut the grass that often, you know, all the leaf blowers, stuff like that? So I, I guess that's about the only, uh, uh, thing there. And, uh, I would have to say we do have a great water and sewer department. Those, I love hearing them guys. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Any other member from the public wish to speak? Mr. Heller?
Just drop something.
Hank, you dropped your phone.
Your phone was on your lap?
Yeah. If it was money, just leave it behind.
Seeing what I'm losing as I'm walking. I just want to say thank you for the budget presentation. I think you all did a very fine job. And I think that the various departments did a very fine job. It was informative and helpful, and I was glad to hear it. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, member? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public.
I just want to answer one question for Nick. If you don't mind, you can close it first.
Let's close it first.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by, uh, Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Micella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
First closed? Go ahead, ma'am.
So Nick, when you talked about compost and, and we actually met with a company that would be willing to do something like that here in Porcipony, from leaves to all that that you talked about. Um, now that we have a new superintendent of Parks and Forestry, we're going to reevaluate that and meet with our Parks and Forestry Superintendent, um, and stupid area over there by the sewer treatment plant, Sharkey's and all that, where we can actually do the compost. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
I did have just one comment, uh, maybe directed towards the CFO or, uh, or BA. When I was looking through the budget, um, you know, I see that some of our contracts have been finalized, but with the blue collar workers union, it, it hasn't been. Um, is there any line item there for that or is that not a part of this budget?
The blue collar, uh, unit has been finalized.
Yeah.
The blue collar workers union has been?
It's finalized.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I have.
Okay, um, may I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Micella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.